For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, May 7, 2018. Call the roll, please.
Haas?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Noak?
Here.
And Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, modifications to the agenda. I have one proposed addition, which would be the APD/ACC contract added to 14C, which is new business.
Well, um...
Yes, no?
It will be part of 14A, under contract.
Oh, under contract.
So it'll just be the second one after the city assessing.
Okay, so 14A point one.
Yeah, point two, whatever, and the other one over one. However...
Yes, but I'll do that during the... Thank you. So I'll make that motion now.
Second. Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
And Haas?
Motion carried.
And we're waiting for you.
You can't go on until you say that.
Any other modifications to the agenda? Approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of April 17, 2018. Issues or questions? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's council meeting you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Okay, thank you. Our consent agenda is A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $410,199.98, and B, sunrise SUDS tap takeover, street closures and noise variances on September 29, 2018. And I would like to pull C, the fresh palate from the consent agenda and add it to 12C for discussion.
Not a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we do that.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Haas?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, no presentations, announcements, or proclamations or public hearings. We drop down to report of officers, 2018-19 preliminary budget.
All right, I guess that's me. Okay.
Now what happens if the screen gets caught? Budget's over.
Look at this.
So this, this screen shows our general fund revenues by department. This first column here is the 2016-17 actual. The second column is the 17-18 where we're estimating to be for this current fiscal year, and that's at $10,541,791. We're budgeting for 2018-19 fiscal year to be at $9,620,136, and projecting for the 19-20 fiscal year to be at $9,505,589. The only thing that like, there's a couple of things that jump out to me when I look at this. Right here on the city hall line, the estimated for the, the budget for 18-19 is less than half of what it currently is, and that's because we don't have any more federal grants. And same thing down here for the parks and rec. It's $436,000 because that's for the splash park, and then obviously we don't have that next year.
I'll explain some of that on the, the city hall and the federal grants.
This slide shows property tax revenue history. Property taxes are our number one revenue source for the city. In the year 2000, we were at $3,791,000, and then it was gradually going up little by little, and in 2008, we peaked at $4.6 million. And then the economy decided to recede, so down it goes. We had a little spike here in 2015, and then for the other three years, we pretty much remained flat. So what I think is really interesting about this is that we are still pretty much the same as we were 18 years ago. There's only difference about $70,000, so it's not good, but hopefully those will go up for us. Another major source of revenue for the city is the revenue sharing that comes from the state of Michigan. There's two pieces to that. It's the, the constitutional is the part of the sales tax that we get, and there's some kind of formula that's figured out. It's based on population and what we get. And then the other piece is statutory, so we're kind of like at the mercy of the legislators on what they decide and if it's going to go up or down, and I believe it's predicted to go down a little bit for next year. But, so this, this slide shows if we were to get the full amount, this green line right here is where we would have been, so pretty close to a million dollars. But the red line is what we actually got, and we're kind of tapering off. These lines are pretty far apart now, so that's about, I think about $3.7 million. I found this interesting statistic on the savemycity.org website, and it says, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, from 2002 to 2012, revenues for the state of Michigan increased by 29%, but revenues the state provided to local government for local services like police, fire, and recreation decreased by more than 56%. Not really the way we want it to go. This next slide kind of illustrates that point a little bit more. This is, Greg had mentioned that he's seen this at a conference with the Michigan Municipal League, and this shows growth in municipal general revenue from 2002 to 2012, and along the bottom are all 50 states listed, and they're in order by the highest growth. So Hawaii is up over 110%, and then it just declines from there, and look at the only state that is in the negative, that's the state of Michigan. It's pretty interesting.
No.
Dismlike button for this one? This is the general fund expenditures by department, so same thing how it was split out in the columns as the revenues. They're kind of, this one is down a little bit, general government is down quite a bit, IT is up, some are, they're up and down, and the reason for that is currently the employee, the wages, like a lot of them are paid out of city hall, general government, and, but the benefits are, they're, they're not according to how the, the wages are. So my goal is July 1st to have it split out. Like, for example, my salary comes out of general fund 95%, 2.5% out of major streets, 2.5% out of local, but my benefits are all out of the general fund. So the road funds are not taking their share. So basically, that's how it is for everybody that's in the general government line. So also in, on this screen is inner fund transfers out, and for 18-19, we budgeted $359,263, and what that is, is transfers out of the general fund to subsidize other funds, like the marina and local streets. So...
No.
Okay. So for this fiscal year, we are estimating to be at $10,537,674, right here, and then for the 18-19 fiscal year, we're going to be at, or we're budgeting, $9,867,943. This is just some highlights about the expenditures. This first one I already talked about with allocating the benefits, just like pay. The defined benefit pension plan required annual contribution has increased from $796,584 in the current fiscal year to $847,999 for the next fiscal year. So a jump, jump of about $50,000. Retiree healthcare contribution for the current fiscal year was 2% of salaries and wages, and that is currently underfunded. We are at, what is it, 21%? 21% on retiree healthcare. So in order to boost that up, we are budgeting for 6% contribution in 2018-19 and 7% in 19-20. I probably mentioned a little bit more about that. There's a new requirement by the Michigan Department of Treasury to report on how, what our funded ratio is. For the pension, for the, what's it called?
Defined benefit.
Defined benefit, we are 76.5%, and for OPEB or retiree healthcare, we're 21%. And they have these formulas in, in there that if you don't meet certain criteria, you'll, it'll set off a trigger, and then, I don't know.
There will be things that they will require for you to increase that funding. Now, the one thing on the retirement plan, there are two ways that they look at unfunded liability. The actuary does it over a three-year period, what they call smoothing. So like this year, we did very well on our investments for a change. So when we have to report next year, we should actually, I'm hoping, if I'm reading how they do it right, we'll see our unfunded liability decrease. Will be higher than 76% or whatever, because for this last year, we went up. We, our assets improved. But over a three-year period, that's why that increase in what we need to provide is because of the year before that, we made nothing. And when you make nothing and you have expenses, your assets go down. So we have to get rid of that bad year and hopefully have continued good years in order for the actuary to want to show a better number. But it gives you a more consistent, you don't have large rises or, or large drops in that. Whereas the way the state does it, using, I think it's Gadsby, whatever it is, number, it is on an annual basis as a snapshot for that year. So it could be up one year, down the next. It just depends on your investments do, how much you're having to pay out, and so forth. So, you know, you got those two numbers, and they show the same thing, but in very different ways.
And you expect the 6 and 7% to, will that keep it from getting worse or actually make it?
It'll make it more funded, it should.
Yes. One, the city has made a lot of changes in its retiree health. We do have those from older contracts, older employees who've been there, me included, who, when they retire, they, they have retiree health, only for themselves, not their spouse. And it's paid in police and in ours, 100% for these older ones. But the newer employees either don't get a retiree health insurance at all, or they have a cap on how much. And all the other ones either have none or a cap. So we know pretty much what those employees are going to cost. And so as we increase this by 6, 7, and we may then want to go up to 8, and whatever, we can begin to see where we're going and what our costs are going to be, and that 8% may be, or 7% may be 5, because it is based on wages. Wages go up, the amount that's going in is that much more. So I, I think we're going definitely in the right direction, and I, and we've done a lot, starting before I became city manager, of controlling those retiree health insurance costs. So we're definitely going in the right direction.
Administrative salaries are budgeted for a 2% increase, and increases for other work groups are just according to the contract. So our general fund projected balance for this current fiscal year, we are estimating to have a very tiny operating surplus for this fiscal year of $4,117. At least it's not negative.
We started out with, what, $250,000, then it was jumped up to over 480 because of North Riverfront Park. So the fact that we get it to here is very good.
So you add that to the fund balance from fiscal year '17 of $2,762,550. That takes our estimated fund balance at fiscal year end, this fiscal year, of $2,766,667. Of that amount, $39,431 is assigned to IT Capital, $18,427 to fiber optic maintenance, and $40,000 to the River Center. So the rest of that is unassigned, and that's $2,668,809, which results in a 25% unassigned fund balance percentage. At the beginning of the year, Karen had said that it would be 29%, but taking on the North Riverfront, that lower debt, but we're still, our policy says a max of 20%, so we're still doing good. The general fund projected balance for 2018-19, we are saying that our expenditures are going to be $247,807 more than our revenues. So then you add it to the surplus from the, I might point them there. Add it to the surplus for this current fiscal year, add it to the year from, or add it to the, the 2017 fiscal year, and we're estimating that our fund balance at fiscal year end 2018-19 will be $2,518,860. We're assigning, IT Capital isn't in there anymore because we plan to use that up. Fiber optic maintenance, $22,082 is assigned, and then $45,000 for the River Center. So that leaves an unassigned estimated fund balance at fiscal year end 2018-19 of $2,451,778, and that's a 25% unassigned fund balance percentage.
And even though the fund balance dropped, the reason the percent stays the same is because our expenditures are also anticipated to drop as well.
So I, the, the Michigan Department of the Treasury created a full revision of the entire chart of accounts, so the numbers that are currently in the preliminary budget are the old numbers. This has to be implemented by the end of this calendar year, and my goal is to put the final version into the new numbers. I've been working with Mark Sandula. He's been helping us trans, you know, transition, there you go. So the, the format, it still pretty much looks the same. Some of our fund numbers are going to change. That's what this first set of three numbers is. The second set of numbers is the activity or the function, they're calling it. So currently, we have a department called 170, where basically everybody that works here in city hall, their salary or a part of it is charged to 170. Well, that fund, or that activity is no, is not going to no longer exist in the new format, so there's going to be, everybody's going to pretty much be in a different function or a activity. So it'd be like engineering will have their own, building official, clerk's office, city manager. Council will have their own planning. They'll all be separated, separated out. And then also our, right now, the revenue activity, the second set of three numbers doesn't match the expense, and going forward, it is going to match, so that'll make it a little easier. Another big change with the chart of accounts is in the last three digits, this, for this particular account number, this is general fund, clerk's office, salaries. So right now, we put like all of our, our, all of our utilities come out of one account, but going forward, it's going to be broke up by electricity, by natural gas, communications, whatever. It'll be, I think, a lot easier for budgeting. That's all I have, but I just wanted to, I forgot to thank the people that were involved in the creation of this budget. It wasn't just me alone. I probably wouldn't still have my sanity if it was up to just me, but I want to thank Leland, she's in the back there, she's the deputy clerk. The department heads were extremely instrumental in this, and then also Greg. So thank you all, I appreciate it.
I'm just going to go over with my budgetary, but I am not. There's a lot of things I won't cover that are already in it, because Anna did. She did an excellent job. This, as she said, is, was a team effort. It was a different, it was probably a more difficult budget to put together, because with Anna being new, she started asking questions that not necessarily any of the department heads or I had addressed before. They were handled by the clerk, the finance director. Now she was asking questions about them, questioning some of things, you know, why was this done and whatever, and really getting us all to think much more deeply into the budget, which is helpful. I think by next year, it will be much smoother, especially with the new chart of accounts and the way that is done. Every department is going to end up having to prepare their own individual budget within certain parameters, so they don't look this wild. So it will, I think, be a much smoother, and it'll be a better overall budget for the council, and easier for them to see exactly what does it cost for the planning department to run as a, as a department, or the engineering department, and so on. The, we already discussed that, I don't need to do that. We did have, worked very hard on our, our active employee health insurance. We were initially told back last fall that, oh, even though you've gone to, it's high deductible and it's going to save you all this money, your rates are going up by 22% starting in the beginning of '18, which sent us all into shock after we peeled ourselves off the wall. Well, we, we knew that that wasn't going to work either for the city or the employees. We were able to get our health insurance committee back together, which has representatives from all the unions plus admin, and we brought in our Blue Cross people, and we brought in Hub, our agent, and we finally came up with plans, revised them, went to a Blue Care Network on the high deductible, which has had its pluses and minuses, but was able to contain costs and get a buy-in by everybody. And so instead of going up 22%, we probably went up anywhere from 2% to 3%, which was a big difference and made that. Right now, Kathy is expecting rates, because we estimated in putting together this budget, we knew what we would have the first half of fiscal year. Second half is a guess, because that's from January 1st to June 30th, and of course, January 1st, the new rates going to effect, which we don't know what they are. We used a 10% increase just to, of premiums, just to be safe. Kathy is cautiously optimistic that they're going to be considerably lower, but we will see. If they're up like they were last year, I told the committee, we can plan on being back here again, going through this exercise of how do we contain the costs for everybody. We have, so that's, basically everything else was covered by Anna in terms of the general aspects. What I wanted to do was then just go through some of the departments and just the highlights of what they're, they're looking at either finishing up this year or going in the next year. The general government, Anna mentioned that there was that big difference in how much, both in revenue and expenditure, and a lot of that had to do with our federal grants, which are through the MEDC. These are our CDBG funds that have been used for facade projects such as at the Owl and at the Alpena Furniture. We had, because of problems with them constantly changing how their grants operate while you're in the middle of a grant, we ran into some real problems in terms of money was going out to the contractors and not coming in from the state. That put us rather in arrears, and as a result, we worked with the state, they brought in their professional administrator to go over and get us to where that we can get our, our money that is due us, to help balance that out. That is in the process, and by the end of the fiscal year, we should have all those payments. And that was significant, because I think those totals were somewhere near $900,000.
It will be by the end.
By, by the end of what's done. And we owe a little bit of that out to a contractor, but it, most of it was money that owed us that we had already spent. So that inflated what we have for this year, and next year, we don't have any of those grants. We're kind of going back on a hiatus because of just the way they'd been operating their programs, to kind of get a better handle on them as to whether we really want to do them, and if so, we really have to have a good project for it. So we're, we're not saying we won't use them, we're just going to be a little more discerning about it. As far as our outside agencies that we fund, we basically funded those as we have in the past. Hunt, we received the same amount of funding, plus again, they'll get an officer from the city. Target, we received the same amount of money, and I, and I believe Humane Society got the same amount that they got last year, of $17,000. One that did not get funded but that asked for funding was the Thunder Bay Theater. And I've talked with Jeff, the director there, we had a good discussion, he understands why. It's basically, the problem is that under at least the Attorney General's ruling, we need to get a comparable service of value for the money that we're giving out. What they were talking about and what they basically have done is have a free performance in the parking lot, which unfortunately for them had to go indoors because of weather, but I said that really, in my opinion, did not qualify, especially since years ago, we always funded the city band, and we were told we couldn't do that anymore. We could if we actually passed a millage, because that was allowed by state law. If we passed a millage dedicated to them, they could get funded, but just to give them money out of the general fund, no. And I said, if I can't give it to our city band, I can't really justify it to you. What I did say we would do is we will be talking through the year and see if we can come up with a way of doing where we do get a value back that will beat the state requirements so that they at least would be eligible funding. Not saying they won't get funded, but at least would be eligible. So that will be worked out. The other big things that we, we have are just some updates. We're finishing our comprehensive plan, part of it this year, part of it next. We have put money in again for a goose hunt in the fall, if the council decides to do that again. And we'll be upgrading the fire alarm system here at city hall that was supposed to be in this year's budget, just to get to it, it's going in the next year. And we're completing the HVAC system, which as you notice here is not working right now because the new one is being installed. That will effectively wipe out our CIP fund we have, our capital improvement fund, that was the money we got from selling the civic center and some other funds that we had, that will deplete it. It did its job, we made improvements here at public safety, and now, not public safety, they had their own fund, but some others at the cemetery and so forth, and now that money's gone.
Is there a, just to interrupt you?
Sure, no, absolutely not.
Is there a plan to replenish that?
We talked, it could be. It was basically from sales and other unusual things. We talked, it could be, it was basically from sales and other unusual things, but, you know, if the budget allows, we could start putting money into it. Otherwise, basically what it is, is it comes out of the general fund, those costs.
So, they'll always be, I mean, it was a good place to put that money.
Right.
But there'll always be upgrades to make in the future, so it'll just come out of the general fund as needed.
Yes.
There is no fund.
No, there is, yeah, as long as there isn't one there, and if we put money in, it'll be from the general fund as well, so it's kind of what these other ones came from outside sources, and it, so it works really well. We do have a couple of things regarding the organizational changes, one, the biggest one being of course, the retirement of Jeff Shea, which is what, you gotta down to what, three weeks, three, two days, 12 hours and 13 minutes, something like that, before he retires on June 1st being his last day. We attempted to hire a replacement, I don't know if Jeff scared him away or not, but nobody came forward qualified who wanted the job. So, what we ended up doing is putting it out for bid for the services, and we got one response, which is really well we expected, it's from Berg Associates Assessing out of Rogers City, they did our reappraisal of the residential over the last two years, and so we are, in fact, you'll have the contract before you here a little later, for services for the next two years. At, well, their fee is 75,000, we're budgeting 85 because there are some things that are just based on hourly, based on needs, such as if we go to the tax tribunal, things like that, that they would charge outside. So, that's one big change. We will be continuing to look for somebody to fill that spot, but there's a major shortage of level three assessors throughout Michigan and especially in the rural, rural areas as you get farther north, so we're not expecting anybody to suddenly fall out of the sky into our laps anytime real quick. The other change is in our HR director Kathy Heims, she requested, I looked at it, thought about it and recommended approval, put it in the budget, to change her, move her up one pay grade. But then, where she was supposed to be at step seven, she was pulled back to step five. The reason is because of, since I've just been a city manager, her responsibilities have changed a great deal and have increased. Not only does she do an awful lot regarding anything to do with the union contracts and dealing with personnel issues, with all the personnel and so forth, but health insurance she has almost taken over 100% in terms of, of all the dealings with Blue Cross and Blue Care Network, and that is not a fun job. And, and a lot of other things that have really expanded that role, so that, me getting her to do some things for me once in a while, sometimes can be difficult, I guess she doesn't have the time. So, I felt it was, it was based on her responsibilities and what she looked at about what others have been getting around the state, that was an increase, a step up. It probably resulted in about a 1,500, 1,700 dollar change in actual pay from what she would have otherwise gotten, but I believe it is deserving based on the workload that she does and that, and the diversity of the work. In the I T department, of course, they continue to do everything that keeps us going, but one of the big things that they, that they are gonna be implementing this coming year is we purchased the, a module with B S and A for the D P W department. Right now, most, they work, they're the most diverse of any of our departments, they basically work for almost every other department within the city in one way or the other. And when they do, we manually on a quarterly basis through, I think, a journal entries or whatever, we allocate those costs for labor, equipment, materials to the appropriate department. It's time consuming, it's not very efficient and doesn't give us a real accurate picture. Under this program, it'll basically be time sheets, you know, take over for time sheets and their time cards, but it will do that allocation in real time. So, we won't be doing it on a quarterly basis, it'll be on real time, so we've, we are buying that software through the I T department, everybody in D P W will be trained in it, how to use it, and it should make a big difference down the road, just in terms of the efficiency and giving a, again, since we're going to these, change in the chart of accounts, a more accurate picture of what the costs are for the various departments that utilize D P W. The other is, the other big change that's gonna happen, not this year, but in 2019, 20, is how I T is funded. They used to be part of the equipment fund, it was finally decided to pull them out and they were given $500,000 and said that's there for the last year, 10 years. And it was like Steve questioned, well, who came up with that number? And nobody asked me. It didn't last 10 years, but he really stretched it. At the end of this year, I think at the start of this year, we had about 34,000 left in it. So, we will wipe that out this year. So, what we're gonna do next year again with these, the change in how we have to show our budget, is there will be an I T service charge, charged to every department based upon the service provided and the equipment needs. And so, planning will be charged, assessing will be charged, engineering will be charged those, and those will be calculated before we even start the budget process, so all we have to do is just tell each department, plug it in. And it will then give a, a source for then, for the needs that we have, and that may fluctuate from year to year if we have some major need that we know is coming up, but the idea is that they'll give a truer picture, and either way, it's still coming out of the general fund, but it's now gonna be a more accurate way of doing it. Cemetery, they're, they are working right now on their, the rehabilitation of the garage, that is all done except for the signing, which will be completed by next, early part of next fiscal year, and we're also working on the mausoleum. The other item, which gets a lot of attention still and questions, is the fence, which is no longer there, obviously, we moved it a year, year and a half ago now. I was at a presentation at the library about the history of our cemetery and cemeteries here, and of course, that question came up, so I rather gravely got up and said, I'll answer that. That, yes, we had removed it because some of it just disintegrates, literally, you can't fix it. We have budgeted money this year and this coming year, plus the next fiscal year, for its replacement. Part of the plan, and we haven't got it finalized, but we will over the next few months, is a solicitation program to where people can in essence buy a section of fence or part of a section of fence in memory of a loved one, buried there, whatever, and put a plaque on and that will pay the cost, part of the cost, the city's also gonna be putting in as well. And we hope that that works. I found out at this presentation that actually that's how that original fence got built, was through solicitations. I think the city may have put in a very small amount and the rest was through solicitations, people and businesses, and they built the fence. So, we are looking at that. The gate that's there, the arch, we are gonna keep, it's still there, we'll clean that up, repaint it, and may even look and see if historically, right now, I think the columns are nothing but block, and whether they were, they were faced in any way or anything, and then redoing those as well. So, that is in the works. The police department, I've been, you know, asked by Joe probably for the last several years about, can I get another officer? I'm still below my, what I should be staffed at, and it's always, yes, if the budget will allow, and I always end up saying, no, the budget won't allow it. Then, we're kinda, in some working and discussions Joe had with Don McMasters from A C C, kind of a win-win situation, a possibility, and that was to provide police presence on campus during primarily the regular school year, which would start in August and run through early May, is it, I believe, of 20 hours a week. It would not be like the high school where we have a dedicated officer, because this could run from anywhere from like 8:00 in the morning till 8, 9 o'clock at night. And so, what we'll do is it'll be different officers based on how their shifts are, but having that presence for that period of time. The other 20 hours, they'll be able to work here for the department and other duties around the city, and in the summer, those hours will even increase more. So, it can be a real benefit to us as well. And the agreement is, we will split the cost of what is a three-year officer with their benefits and a limited amount of overtime, and it's split 50/50, and I think it's estimated around 39,000 and some dollars, it's in the agreement that you had before you, that you'll vote on later. We see it as a win-win for both the city and the college, and Joe will be working and very closely with Don and others at the college in terms of how the scheduling will work, when the people will be there, but it, you know, it doesn't cover, you know, give us a full presence all the time, and it is a spread out campus, but so far at least, everybody's been very positive about it, so that will be one thing we'll be doing. He will, there will be one additional car also purchased this coming year, possibly, they, the request was for two, it was cut to one, however, we are looking at all these possible funding sources, and if we find some, then we may be coming back with an amendment to, to fund a second car down, down the road during the year. Also, the Hunt team, as I said before, that will continue to get its full funding, that, or at least what we did last year, plus the officer. Fire and ambulance, most things are continuing as they were. The, our agreement right now with Presqueo Township, which, to help them develop and get their fire department back on, online, that had ceased operation, expires in March of next year. They have had some discussions with Bill about extending that for a year. We think it's a win-win for both in terms of both financial, the commitment that we have, much of which will really be Bill's time with this extension, and so we expect that before July 1st, there'll be, before you, an extension of that agreement for one year through March of 2020. And that should probably be it at that point, that they should be fully able to be on their own. They just feel they could use one more year of assistance with their, their new people. We will be getting a, replacing these, I think Bill was before you a while back, those heart monitors and defibrillators that are no longer being serviced and could fail most any time, that was considered an absolute must, that we must do, so we are. Bill's also applied for funding for the self-contained breathing apparatus and the tanks, that is a big ticket item, about 170, 75,000, and so we're hoping on grant money on that, cuz that's how it's, we're figuring, there isn't 175,000 in the budget, and so we're at least cautiously optimistic about that one. The last thing is we, their contract expires June 30th of next year, which will be the end of this coming, upcoming fiscal year, so we'll be starting negotiations either at the end of this year or early next year on a new contract. They currently have a three-year contract they're under. Public Works, I pretty much went into what's happening there. We are looking at being funded, it's not a large amount of money, is our consolidated downtown bicycle parking facility, to try to get the bikes off the sidewalk. We need to replace some of the Christmas decorations and we have already, I think, they're getting ready to start next week on, and that will continue into the next fiscal year of replacing, of tree planting, replacing mainly street trees where they had to be cut down, most of them for the ash war that hit. The lighting department, we kept as much as we could in there, I think it's about 45,000 to upgrade lights to the LED, because it's a major cost savings. The one thing we are going to do though, is look at, based upon where those replacements are going to occur, I know you don't like this, but we will, anyways, the intensity of the LED lighting. So, if it's in the parks, it may not be as intense, it'll be a lower intensity LED light as compared to maybe what happens in downtown and the neighborhoods, if we do any residential, the same thing. It's a little more work on our part, but it, it does do a, it still saves us considerably on money, but not suddenly making areas that have never been really real bright overly bright, so we'll be doing that. Parks and Rec, very busy, even with a tight budget. This year, we'll be finishing up Starlight Beach and the Splash Pad, at least the hope is, June 30th on that. The North Riverfront Park Boardwalk, they are now installing the boards, I believe, the boardwalk itself, we did make a change to reduce costs, is that the concrete walk that was next to it, we are not replacing that right now, we're going to just have that graded and seated or hydro seated, whatever, and just have it as long. It's still be, you still gotta walkway, so we're not losing any of that, and maybe at the end we'll find we don't even need the walk, but if we do, that can be easily added later on, and it was a way of not necessarily busting the bank completely as we had to redo that, but that will also be done. In this upcoming fiscal year, along with our normal maintenance and everything we do, the Dog Park hopefully will begin in July, once the North Riverfront Park work is done. We're gonna be replacing the original ban shell sound system that we've had quite a few complaints about over the last few years, so we're gonna replace that, just thought that the time was right. We have applied for a C Z M grant for work in front of NOAA to create an amphitheater and an ADA compliant canoe and kayak launch ramp, somewhat similar to what we have at Duck Park. However, that, in that, we, we have no money really invested in it. We are applying for the grant, the match is through NOAA and then getting donations in kind and so forth. We will be the fiduciary, because we need to be, and we will oversee the construction if we get the grant, and I'm not sure what the timeline is on that. We will be facilitating a design charrette for Michikira's Park, that will be fall, either early, late fall, that will be doing that. And the other, which I failed to put into my letter, was two things, one, the Thunder Bay Arts Council asked for $5,000 for bypass sculpture, that we did fund, and that's because the sculpture they're talking about will be in Washington Avenue Park down there, along the river, near the cemetery. So, since it's in a park, we, we agree, it's not covering anywhere near all the costs, but it was our contribution towards it. The other is, is last year, we had put some money in towards the restrooms here downtown across from the marina. Those are, quite simply put, an abomination, they really cannot be saved, they, so our, what we did is we had quite a bit of money in there, which was really, could not even be used towards that project, to us, it was throwing, no pun intended, throwing money down the drain and not getting any benefit from it. So, what we're doing is we, we have $10,000 basically to demolish those restrooms this year, this coming fiscal year. We'll then have budgeted to put additional porta-johns in that area, and then we have money to hire an architect to design a new facility that will go in Bayview Park, near the, the current parking lot that's off of the marina and there, and it'll be close to where the Thunder Bay Arts Council has their, yeah, they're out on the bay, there. And then we'll be searching for funding sources on that, at least to cover part of that funding, so we can build that in the next year or two. So, that's what's happening in parks. Street funds are all very tight, we are looking to re-strike Second Avenue to increase the amount of parking, we are also, it will be before the D D A, it was supposed to have been, but we didn't, this month, but we didn't have a quorum for the D D A to participate 50% on that, since this is a direct benefit to the downtown businesses. The intersection of Wilson and Johnson Street will be reconstructed, they had a dedicated left turn lane, a lot of that is precipitated by the new development that's going in at the northeast. at the northeast corner there, where the parking lot is, of a, of a new assisted living. That should, that construction should begin here this summer, perhaps yet by June. Also, the reconstruction of Miller Street from Second Avenue to Walnut, that's water sewer and streets. That, we got a, a major grant from MDOT. Yeah, for that, that goes towards it. So that will be a major project on the north side. That won't be until fall probably, that, that one, that it'll be occurring. On the local street end, Merchant Street will be resurfaced. The Hillman State Trail, which was the Opaxton Spur, our portion that runs from Bagley Street to Franklin, running through where the high school and that, we had intended to pave. We were going to pave for the paving of it. The problem is that whole project is way behind, because there are issues about bridges out beyond the city. So they are not going to probably start construction till either very late this year or even next year. So all we're going to do this year, coming year, is just put in conduit for lighting, because we, our intention was to light it. Then the following year, probably nineteen-twenty, is we'll put in the money to pave it. And then the lighting installation will probably occur a year or two after that. So we're going to just phase it. And that helped with our budget issues as well. So it actually was a benefit to us of them being a bit behind. The one thing that we initially, and I said in my letter, we're going to complete this fiscal year, is US twenty-three North of extending industrial highway across on the east side through the wetlands with sewer water and a new street. Unfortunately, because of getting it out the bid and doing things, that's going to be ended up. And it's going to affect the budget numbers, but it's either this year or next year, it's going to be delayed till next year. It will occur, but it will be this summer, by the time we get it actually under construction in that. The marina, Don Gilrat, Harvey Master, is working on a new three-year agreement for the operation. His goal is to have it before council, before the start of the new fiscal year. The current one, I believe, runs out at the end of the year, Doc?
Yeah, December third.
Yeah, so the intent is to extend it for three more years. We did have, we have some ongoing issues with the leaking underground storage tank. We thought we were kind of had that under control. DEQ came in last year, I think, and had somebody come in and do some more testing. We have issues, we have to do more remediation. They do have a program that will pay half, up to fifty thousand dollars. So that will go, but this is going to be a multi-year effort, so we have budgeted money for that. We also had ice damage to docks and to the gas line going out to the pump on the dock. So we budgeted additional money in this year's budget, the current one, to get all of that fixed. I see your cost estimate there, the.
It wasn't an estimate, that was just part of it. I worked it, I have it part right now while you're.
Well, I just keep the, keep it low, keep the price low on that. The final thing on the marina, I just want to mention very quickly, is that there's going to be a major study done. This is one Don came and presented to council earlier in the year, or even, yeah, I think it was earlier this, or last year it was. Where through the Port Collaborative, which are all the various ports that have marinas and, and facilities, they're putting in money, we did, they got a grant for, for the other fifty percent, to look at the economic impact of marinas across the state. And then to put a template together to where we can actually punch in numbers that will help show what the impact of our individual marine is. So we can look at, if we're going to expend money, where's the best bang for the buck? So it'll be very interesting to see how that comes out. They're supposed to be starting this year.
Yeah, we'll be, they'll be in Alpine on May seventeenth. They'll come for their visit over.
They're going to all the different ports, I guess, and, and doing visitations, and ours will be one of those. The building department, the one thing, the reason things looked a little better on those transfers from general fund to different departments is we are expecting this year that there won't be any subsidy of the building department because of revenues that have been coming in, and none next year. Now, two of those are two big projects that are going to help get that, where we don't have to do any subsidy, and that's the assisted living facility I mentioned earlier, and the Northland Federal Credit Union over on Bagley Street. What we don't know still, initially, we thought both would have, would be asking, getting building permits yet this fiscal year. We don't know if that'll happen with both. In fact, maybe what, we're pretty sure of one, though never a guarantee, the other one probably is going to be either probably in July or so, before we get it, because they've had some issues with cost overruns and so forth. The, the fact is, unless the projects just don't get built, the money, the revenue will come in. And right now, we don't see that either one would not proceed, so we're confident on that. Capital group and fund, I already mentioned, it's depleted. The Brownfield Fund, we continue to pay out reimbursements on our TIFs. We've got, we will make the final payoff to Dean Arbor this year. Then after that, we've got a year and a half through twenty, or twenty-twenty, of putting money into our remediation fund, and then that TIF will be done. The others will still have a number of years yet to go. But the other big news is we were notified that we were awarded a three-hundred thousand dollar US EPA Brownfield Grant. It's the second one we've received. We got another one probably close to ten years ago, maybe now. They only gave three of them to the state of Michigan. We were one of them, and we were the largest. We received three-hundred thousand dollars. We have to go through some steps before they officially say you have a grant, but it's the federal government, they want to make everything difficult. But it's a normal process, we did the same thing before, so Adam and I will make sure that that happens. The other two grants were two-hundred thousand in the state, so we felt pretty good about that. They were very impressed with the application. The final is city water and sewer funds. And with that, I'm not going to go into any detail, because the funding gains of that are now for rich. He will present the water sewer rates and where we are at for the upcoming year. And in conclusion, otherwise, is I just again want to thank all the departments, everybody. They did a really good job. It was a more difficult process this year, but it was well worth the time and the effort.
Number which provides the council, we had, we had not forgotten to get downstairs and incorporate it into the budget process, so that's why it came out later. But every year at this time, once we've completed the draft budget to this point, we start looking at our expenses as far as putting them into the formula that we use to calculate the water and sewer rates for the upcoming year. We're at that point now, and we looked at the expenses for the utilities, water volume sales, all the factors that go into it. Just to begin with, the rate of the serve charge that we charge all of our customers, remain at the same level as last fiscal year, there was no increase in that. Billing charge was increased by two percent to match the contractual increase to SUEZ. The infrastructure maintenance charge was increased by five point one nine percent for each utility towards meeting the system needs. I remember going back, we were, our, our system needs, a number of years ago, when Gosling Zubek did this thing, was about three point three million. Now we're up over four million dollars in our annual needs. So it's going to be a long time before we ever achieve that, but we have to start working towards that way. So this represents about seven cent each per thousand gallon of usage on water and sewer. And the operation maintenance and debt service charges per thousand gallon are modified per the previous established methodology. One of the things we're, we're doing, a lot of stuff was classified as capital that really was more of a maintenance, replacing pumps, rebuilding pumps, et cetera. Those, those were listed as a capital project. We're shifting those over to maintenance. So we're seeing a little bit of an increase, a, a, a pretty good increase in, in a couple of the areas that the water recycling plant and water treatment plant resulted in a significant increase per unit cost associated with those. Overall, we are proposing an eight point two nine percent increase in the overall water and sewer rates for the seventeen, eighteen to eighteen, nineteen fiscal years. The rates proposed with all customers paying the same rate, again, I say all customers, that will be including the township, should generate three million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars for infrastructure maintenance projects. The above available funding is based on all customers paying the same rate, including Alpine and Township. As the Township has been paying the same rate since two thousand and eleven, and may likely be paying a lower rate into the future, this proposed funding level will not be attained, so we will not reach that, three, three point one four five. And I just put a comparison sheet together to show what, what last year to this year was. In water, we actually saw an increase in sales. They went from four hundred and ninety-eight million gallons to five hundred and four million gallons in water sales. About a five million gallon change, five point nine million gallon change in the sales. Went up about one point eight percent. As I said, this, we saw a pretty significant jump at the water treatment plant, about forty-five cents per thousand. But because we saw this increase in the volume, our per-unit cost for distribution, commercial, dropped one cent per thousand. Again, here's that infrastructure maintenance charge, we talked about going to seven cents. And then our debt dropped by about eleven cents. And the reverse on sewage, we actually saw a reduction in the volume of sewer that was billed from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen. And these are based on, when I say that, we use the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, the total volume sales for that previous year is what we use in calculating these, these future ones. So it's the most recent full year of rates. Again, here, we, we saw our water recycling plant increase almost forty-three cents per thousand. Collection, up nine cents. That infrastructure maintenance that we talked about before, seven cents. And then we saw a reduction in our debt. We've also got a loan payment that's going to be dropping off in nineteen-twenty, which impacts that as well. But overall, we're, we're seeing about, or we're proposing a ninety-three cent per thousand gallon increase. So the new rates, last year, the rate per thousand gallons of water and sewer was twelve dollars and twenty-two cents. This year, it would be twelve dollars and fifteen cents. Just to give you a little background on the, these are our O and M and maintenance costs. These, this year was relatively, we had some high costs in professional services associated with this year, where we're not, we, we haven't budgeted for that level of professional services next year, but we have increased the maintenance. So we're, we're seeing that stay pretty constant, but it's a shift from professional services over to maintenance activities. And then in two thousand and nineteen, we see that started to drop off a little bit. But we, we try to go through and calculate what those, what those costs are per thousand. And then we take a, a three-year average of that, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty. We take that average to try to smooth any, any humps in the process out, and then divide it by our volume sales to generate a cost per thousand. And we do that for distribution, commercial, our debt at the water, for the water recycling plant, the collection system, total, total costs, and then our debt. I'll also include tabs here, this, these are the volume totals that I get from Mike, as far as the volumes. And then I looked at our costs. I go down through, tabulate out, drop out our capital costs, because those are excluded. Just look at our operation maintenance costs, and then use those numbers in coming back to the O and M costs here. Once we have that all calculated, we go over to the main spreadsheet, which, and these are our ready-to-serve charges. Also, those, those ready-to-serve charges for all of our customers generate about six hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue. Operation maintenance, and this is strictly a recovery. Operation maintenance, the, the funding that comes in from those charges simply offsets what it costs us to operate and maintain the plants and the collection distribution system. Again, here, our debt service charge, that's strictly just to offset what we pay as far as debt payments, bond payments, et cetera. Our infrastructure maintenance charge, this is the one I said went up seven cents. Last year was a dollar thirty-five each. This year, we're, we're proposing to increase that to a dollar forty-two. And then our billing service charge went up to two percent. Brings us up to that twelve dollar and fifteen cents per thousand. What this does, and these are, these are all summarized over here as far as the revenue. Revenue's generated from each. This covers our, our operation maintenance, debt service, our infrastructure maintenance charge, basically money, funding for capital. Billing, covers our billing costs. Then we incorporate our estimated expenses for water and sewer with no capital. Our miscellaneous revenues, which brings us down to three point one four five. I, I've looked at the numbers, ballparked them as far as what we, what we mean to say. I see if, if things continue, there's no resolution to the issues with the township, et cetera. We're probably going to see somewhere around two million dollars. We'll probably see about a million dollars less in revenue coming in from that. And that just relates into less capital funding. So it is, it is a, a significant increase. Most of it is driven by expenses that we are incurring at the facilities and in the collection distribution system. The one item that we did, for lack of a better term, voluntarily increased was that infrastructure maintenance charge. And between the two, that went up fourteen cents per thousand. Everything else is basically, as I said, a, a, a cost recovery for all the other expenses. So that's kind of where we're at, and the rates we're looking at for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen.
In the write-up that you had prior to the charts, you had the, the increase as a percentage of eight point something?
Eight point one nine.
Eight point two nine percent.
Is that, this is the first time I'm looking at it. Normally you come and you have a percentage for sewer and a percentage for water.
It's actually six point nine percent for water and nine point six nine percent for sewer.
Oh, so it is, okay. I just looked at the bottom number and wondered what that's, okay.
And our, like I said, our, our water goes up a little bit less, our sewer goes up a little bit more. And that, a lot, and that is kind of dictated by that. Increase in sales for water, decrease in sales for sewer.
Okay, thank you. The expense report that you were showing earlier with the salaries and such on that, is there a chance, did we receive that? I don't think we received an actual copy of that, did we?
I think it should have been in the spreadsheet that I sent, I thought I, the spreadsheet I sent you, but if not, yeah, I can, I can certainly do it. And all this is, I hear a cost. This is strictly out of the proposed two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget. Shows our projected activity for the current year, our budget for next year, and then projected for nineteen, twenty. So that's why I said, well, I have to wait till we get through the draft budget process. Then I can take those numbers. Then I can take those numbers, I go down through here, I delete the capital, same thing here, all of the capital is deleted. These are my operation, or my operation maintenance expenses. This happens to be for the collection system. These are my totals for the debt payments. These are my totals for the wastewater recycling plant. And then those are moved over into that other chart, into my O and M and debt chart to calculate, to total and insert it in here to calculate my per thousand, yeah, unit cost. But yeah, these are basically the draft budget you got tonight. I just pulled those out and use those as the basis for generating what those costs would be.
You said also too, that you had a seven point seven six decrease in volume in sewage? Do you know what's driving that? Because we had an increase in water that we were basically selling, we had a little bit of increase there, but we actually had the other way in the sewer.
I think, if I remember right, it was a pretty significant reduction. The township totals, they were five oh four eight, excuse me.
It's on that, this table here.
Okay, let me flip over to that one.
Yeah, it's about a thirty-eight million dollar, or thirty-eight million dollar, thirty-eight million gallon reduction.
Yep.
I think, I think a big chunk of that was township sales. There was a reduction in the volume billed to the township for that period. That's, that was in, that is in the, that's what I was just looking for. Township was two oh three.
Was it an error in calculation or are they just sending us less?
No, they're just sending us less, because these are based on leader reads.
Okay. All right. And then the other thing that I noticed in the report too, that caught my eye, is that we're showing about eighty-five in-city customers less than last year?
Those numbers are based off from reports that I get from Suez. So every year, I send over a revenue report and ask them to give me the current number of customers. And there is some fluctuation, those could be.
That's the most significant one in like the last fifteen years that I noticed too. I was just wondering if there was something that was driving that or?
Those could be seasonal houses that have been vacated, could be irrigation accounts that is no longer being used, because we do have some separate irrigation accounts. So there is a little fluctuation there.
At this time, if any questions about the budget in general, anybody has, you do have two more weeks before we, you have to vote on it, but if you do have any questions, I will be happy either myself or the appropriate department head to answer those questions.
I don't have any right now. I wanted to thank Greg for keeping that as short as he did. I think you're going to take a recess, but it was way under an hour, so I think we'll just keep motoring on that.
You don't have to. I'd love to get my shot in.
Great budget, great budget presentation, Anna. I think everyone appreciated the PowerPoints and the ease of understanding that. I'll just point out really quick from my perspective, the first several slides were kind of doom and gloomish about the state and we all understand what their shortfall is, but it just, I guess, goes to show that we can still operate and provide very good services to the citizens of Alpine because of the hard work that you guys put in. So I certainly appreciate that. I guess my questions will have to probably wait if I have any throughout the next couple of weeks, but I'll say otherwise. Proceed and file then.
I think we also have to set a budget hearing.
We have to set a budget hearing?
Yeah, we have a public hearing at the next meeting.
I realize we set that, but let's set that.
Last year, it was just done in one motion.
Case removed.
Noah?
Yes.
Paulagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you again. Next up.
We have to go back and do a motion on the consent agenda. I noticed that we didn't do one.
Yeah, we did a motion to just remove the item and did not approve the consent agenda, so.
I thought we did it as one big swoop.
I don't know if Cindy included that in your, did you do it all in the same motion? I was wondering about that as well, so.
I guess I kind of felt that we accepted the consent agenda and removed item C in the same time. Can you write it that way? Everyone's fine with that?
That's what I meant.
Okay. Well, then that's good enough. Communications and petitions, we're going to, we're introducing LB, the Executive Director of the Huron Humane Society for a presentation. What's L E? I'm sorry. L A B.
That's okay. Good evening. For those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting me yet, my name is L E B. As the Huron Humane Society provides contracted services for the city of Alpine, I thought it prudent to introduce myself as the new Executive Director of the Huron Humane Society and tell you about some of the things that the society has accomplished since I have joined the organization March first. We deeply appreciate the trust the city has placed in us to care for the homeless, abandoned, and unwanted cats and dogs of Alpine and want to show we are good stewards that trust resolute funding from the city. So here are some of the things that we have accomplished more recently. We've cleaned up our in-house animal tracking software called Pet Point to ensure we have accurate information about all of our current residents. We work hard to get kennel cards made and printed for each of the animals in our care. The kennel cards detail health and hygiene records for each animal, which was something that the veterinarians we work with indicated was needed before they would begin conducting rotating rounds at the shelter. The local vet recently hosted a clinic for the staff to teach us how to better perform basic vaccinations and how to do blood draws for the animals. We placed humidifiers for our cats, for our cats in the colonies. This has helped decrease the disease and the care for the animals. We forged a partnership with the Humane Society of the Huron Valley, which we took twenty-one of our cats and they have since adopted all of them out. We adopted out thirty-three animals in April alone. This was the record number of adoptions since January two thousand and sixteen. As a recipient of a grant from the Bissell Foundation, the Huron Humane Society participated in the Empty the Shelter event this Saturday, and we adopted out fourteen animals on that day alone. We currently have just eighteen adoptable animals at the shelter as we speak. Dog doors are being installed in the runs. This is going to give our dogs access to be able to go inside and outside as they please. We are committed to having a much more pleasing environment to the eyes and the nose, so we are introducing new cleaning practices and have implemented them as part of the shelter. We've also painted and we have plans to continue painting and improving the condition of the shelter. Retail's boutique has been added to our room in the shelter, allowing us to attract shoppers out at the shelter. This is allowing us to bring in people that may have not otherwise come out to the shelter. Square, point of sales has been added, allowing the shelter to accept credit cards and debit payments, so this has been a really huge asset to us for payments. We found a volunteer that has helped clean up QuickBooks, which is a mess. This volunteer has gotten our books from two thousand and eighteen in order and sorted out the books for retail boutique. After discovering our financial records were a mess, we have been working with a certified public accountant to write our ship and have instituted financial accountability practices to ensure that the Huron Humane Society is financially transparent and ethical. We have instituted a code of conduct for everyone affiliated with the Huron Humane Society. We have instituted a drug policy for employees to ensure the safety of the animals and the people who visit the shelter. The board is well on the way to adapting new bylaws for the Huron Humane Society that will professionalize the organization. The yard of the shelter is being cleaned up significantly, and we actually have new landscaping projects that are in the works as we speak. To keep the yard clean and cut down on disease transmissions, pet waste pickup stations have been purchased and will be put out here shortly. After being delinquent for years and not following proper protocols to get discounts through Science Diet, the Huron Humane Society is now utilizing the Science Diet program and is now getting discounts through the animal shelter program. New memorial cards have been designed and placed at funeral homes for mourners, wishing to make contributions to the Huron Humane Society in the names of the departed loved ones. Thanking notes are being sent on a timely basis now. Customer service is continuously to improve. New furnace, or a new furnace has been installed, meaning we no longer have the costly electric heat. New adoption forms have been designed and we've begun updating other forms as well. All adoptable animals are on our websites, which has been a past problem for us, and a new website is being designed. We have put all of the Huron Humane Society regular board meeting minutes online and have begun scanning the minutes of the past board meetings to make those documents to the public, or available to the public. We have named both an employee and volunteer of the order in order to, sorry, in an effort to draw attention to the hard work being done by the employees and staff. We are focusing on recruiting more volunteers to help the society expand its services and provide better care while keeping costs down. We will hold the twentieth annual Huron Humane Society Festival this Friday night, and we invite all of you to attend and help raise money for the care of the animals. The Huron Humane Society staff, board, volunteers, and I have been very busy the past few months and have battled each day to keep our mission first and foremost. We were able to do that in part because of the support from the Alpine, or sorry, from the city of Alpine and its commitment to be a more humane society as a whole. On behalf of the animals and everyone at the Huron Humane Society, thank you for that support. I invite you to visit the shelter and see the improvements that we've made firsthand, and if you're interested, rolling up your sleeves and thinking to volunteer with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Okay, next up is a request from Chief's Bar and Grill for summer outdoor events. Dennis is here. Dennis Mayo is coming up.
What do you think? It's, excuse me, it's that time of year again. This is the twelfth year we've been doing this, having our block parties. This year, I, in my request to the LCC Liquor Control Commission, I have two definite charities that I want scheduled. The first one is June second, a block party for Hope Shorts Alliance and Horizon Holidays. With this, I want to split the money between the two of them. And then on June twenty-first, Relay for Life. I also requested, I don't have a copy of all the dates that I requested, but I believe it was about every other Saturday for the summer. And the reason for that is it costs the bar seventy dollars to, every time I turn in a request, whether I turn it into one or twelve. So I try to do it all at once to save the bar money. This, the other dates that I have down there, I want to hold those just in case someone asks to have a benefit party. Like last year, I had a party there for the Tower of City Tunnels. I've been trying to get ahold of Sharon Cole on that to find out when that is, and I haven't been able to get ahold of her yet. But there are certain dates that, you know, I know people are kind of wanting to do, but it hasn't been finalized yet. And as far as the neighbors, I did bring a list of neighbors that we contacted, and you know, these neighbors, the one neighbor says, I sit outside on my porch and have a drink and listen to the bands. They like it. They actually enjoy it. And we've never had an issue with security. We do provide our own security there. Generally, it's volunteers from the different charities that I do do this for. That's part of the agreement. You know, you make sure, you know, you have somebody out there, make sure no one's trying to sneak in, and I do have, the only entrance into this is through my front door. And I have someone sitting right there checking IDs and, you know, doing a professional job. I'd like to request that we also have a noise abatement till midnight on these days. Last year, you asked me to make my own barricades, and I did. And, you know, this is, like I said, this is just something that we do to help the communities.
Thank you, Dennis. Stay for, in case someone has questions, I'll give you my perspective, I guess, or give counsel my perspective as well, that your establishment has been doing this for a long time, like you said. To date, I am not aware of any neighborhood issues or someone, someone in the neighborhood having an issue with the bars. How you, I saw some traffic about your security, and that's, that from my perspective is between you and the police department and the liquor commission. Of course, I'm going to appreciate the fact that you follow the rules, but they have you establish what your security measures are going to be, so I really don't have too much of an issue from my perspective as the mayor on that. Your charities have always been, over the years, well-established responsible charities from my perspective, and nor have I ever had a complaint from any particular charity that they didn't feel that they were treated right from either financially or otherwise from your establishment. So from my perspective, I don't have an issue with the dates that you've asked for, basically because of all of that. I, my, probably my biggest issue with, and it'll come up again a little bit later, is making sure that we've all communicated very well.
Right. That's, I mentioned to Joe that I, before I do use one of these other days, I will talk to him about it and make sure, you know, everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, I think it's imperative.
I don't want to surprise, you know, anybody with this either, you know.
Yeah. And it's, and that's, yeah, that's imperative, that public safety knows.
And I may not even use those dates, but like you say, I, when I turn in my request, you know, I try and figure out who needs what and when, and there's people who just don't know just yet, so.
Right. And I guess, just maybe to speak for the chiefs, and I'm not sure both of them if I am, and they can tell me if I'm not, but even if you're, even if we approve these dates and you don't use one of them, they should know that you're not using it.
Okay.
Just as well as they know that you are, because if the fire department is responding to someone past you, they'll have to know whether they should avoid that or not.
Right.
So I think communication either way is probably imperative. And I know that some parties don't share the same perspective as I do as far as shutting down a city street, but because of your history, I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I don't know.
Yeah, it's been my perspective too, because when this came up, you know, I looked and I've never received any complaints directly to myself, but you know, I, you know, I don't know, Joel, if you've ever... if you've ever received anything at your department?
No.
No?
Okay, thank you. Same thing, I've never, ever received any complaints from any party either about not being treated right, charities wise, and kind of echoed the same thing that the mayor was saying, so I don't have a reason to have a problem with this at all.
Nor do I. I don't have an issue with that. Do we want to set some sort of timeline, though, that he should report to the city or to either one of the chiefs before an event?
You can even have them work that out.
What we would do is draft that up. The clerk's office, if this is, sounds like it'll probably be approved, but the clerk's office sends out a letter to Dennis explaining the details, and why don't, if that's the case, then why don't you get with the chiefs and find out what timeline they will need to know? Should they know on Monday prior to the event? Should they know the previous Wednesday? Should they know two weeks? Because I really don't know what that.
Whatever they need.
Whatever the communication might be. If that sounds.
I will definitely let them know, I will probably know earlier, you know, who the nights I do need rather than the nights I don't need. You know, if it comes the week before, or even two weeks before, because I can't, I don't want to get things set up within two weeks, you know, you've got to give me a little more time than that.
Right.
Well, my charities have to give me a little bit more time than that, so.
And I think that's beneficial to us as well. Because you wouldn't want to try and contact the public safety department on Thursday because you're having an event on Friday.
Right. And nor do I want to shortchange the organizations that.
Well, sure, because nobody would know you're doing.
Right. We have to get advertisement out there.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Very good.
I move we approve the request from Chief's Bar for their summer events for the dates of June 2nd and 23rd, July, I believe it says 21st and 28th, and August 4th and 18th, and request that we approve the noise variance as presented.
Second. Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, next up is the fresh palate that we moved from the consent agenda, alley use and noise variances from June to September. So it's the same topic. Chris Shawn is here.
Yep. So we just want to basically do the same thing that you kind of did for them. We use the alleyway for music and outdoor entertainment for the downtown area on the weekends throughout the summer months. So this year, same reason as they do, we like to give all that information to the liquor commission at one time, otherwise we're giving, you know, twice a month, $70 to them. So we just want to get the okay from you guys to use the alley Friday and/or Saturday. It will always be probably only one or the other, like Friday or Saturday, and I think we have most of the dates already filled, which is only about two weekends each month all summer long. We may have one or two more dates to add, but other than that, the whole schedule's pretty much done. That I can provide with you guys and with the chiefs, so that they can see what's going on in the alleyway there. And then Sunday night, so it's the block party, which is a bigger deal, which we would sit down and have the same meetings that we had last year.
Okay. Yeah, that one's a little separate because of the parking lot.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger deal, so.
And I might just add to Chris that I did talk to him before the meeting as to whether the, because it's important that the DDA is in communication as well, and he's already talked to Ann and.
Yeah, we work very close with animals on everything we do. We stay in communication with them. We go to their meetings as well and try to work together to make sure downtown is happening and doing all the right stuff that we want it to do.
Excellent. For me, my perspective is almost identical to the last one. Communication with the public safety is probably paramount.
Yep.
So if we draft that as well.
Also, have you contacted the residents there across the alley because they view their entrance is in that alley?
Yep, so.
Don't want them blocked or anything where they can't get in?
Yep, so in my plan here, and I could show you guys or give you the map, we want to back the music up always so that their entrance is clear and free. People will still be in the alley, obviously, but then their entrances are clear and free. They never have to step over any stages of any way, you know, any sorts and whatnot.
Okay.
So.
And certainly provide your dates to them as well.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Anyone else have questions?
I move we approve the request for the fresh palate to close the alley starting June 2nd through September 29th, Fridays and Saturdays as proposed, along with the noise variance.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Down to new business. First up is the contract for city assessing services.
Greg said, pursuant to my upcoming retirement, we have embarked on trying to fill my position. The first goal was to try and hire a new assessor, and after advertising in the Michigan Assessors Association magazine, sending a personal email to each certified assessor in the state that belongs to that organization, we got no qualified applicants. So we went on to hiring a firm, looking to find a firm to do our assessing services. So we sent out an RFP to various firms that we knew have done this kind of work in the past. The RFP was also posted City Hall and placed in the Alpena News. From those efforts, we received one proposal. That was from Berg Assessing and Consulting of Rogers City. This is the same firm that just completed a reappraisal of residential class of properties in the city during 2016 and 2017. They are also the assessor of record for 12 other units of government in Michigan, mostly northeast Michigan, and they have two Level III Master, Michigan Advanced Assessing Officers on staff. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been in discussion with Berg to try and finalize an agreement with the city to perform the assessing functions. The initial RFP requested that the firm have a qualified staff person here at City Hall for three days per week. In the proposal to us, they proposed only two days per week and only from 9:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon. And we found out in talking to them that this service costs an extra $15,000. So with their record of responding to inquiries at the Rogers City office, which is stellar, they keep track of all the inquiries to their office and how soon they're responded to, and they do a great job, we felt we would eliminate that requirement altogether. We will be setting up a dedicated line from our office. Somebody dials my extension, it would go to the Rogers City office, and the question would be handled at that point. We also learned that as part of their proposal, they would be maintaining the current names and addresses of all the property owners in the city. That job is currently done by assessor clerk Patty Lacrosse. So what we did was, he is agreed to fulfill, or we are offering to him 20 hours a week of Patty's time. The other 10 hours a week that she was spending doing assessing will be filled by the building And the new duty she will be doing for Berg will include scanning and emailing documents up to them, where the data will be entered into the main database, maintaining those names and addresses. Berg will then provide a periodic download of the current data to the computers here at City Hall, so we have current data here to work with in handling these requests. Some of the highlights of the contract negotiated between Berg and the city are as follows. They will, of course, perform the assessing function for the city according to applicable state laws. That's huge, that's 90% of what they're going to do. They will respond to inquiries from taxpayers, residents, and city staff in a timely fashion, represent the city in board review hearings, and Michigan tax tribunal hearings. There will be an extra fee for Michigan tax tribunal hearings, $50 an hour for attending small claims hearing, and $50 an hour for preparing and attending any full tribunal hearings. The contract term will be for two years and one month at the rate of $75,000 per year. It will start as of June 4th, 2018, and go through June 30th of 2020, at which time we can extend the contract for another year, both parties agree on price and terms. We have budgeted $85,000 per year to make sure we cover any extra costs that maybe build us for tribunal hearings and such. They also may offer savings on bulk mailings and stuff like that. Their office does handle bulk mailings for a lot of the units they do already. Said before, the city will provide the contract of the services of the assessor clerk position, 20 hours per week, a dedicated phone number. There is a penalty clause in the contract for the city terminating early. If it's terminated in the first year or before June 30th of 2019, it'll be 20% of the remaining contract amount, and if it's terminated in the second year, that'd be a flat $15,000 penalty. But it's still the intention, I understand, of the city to pursue hiring a person to fill the position of assessor rather than a firm because of the more personalized service we can offer our residents here. And Berg did agree to help with the transition if and when that occurs. Its staff recommends that Council awards the contract to Berg Assessing and Consulting Incorporated to perform the assessing functions for the city per the attached draft contract.
Just a couple other notes. The contract is actually 25 months, because we have one month of this year, which is 62 whatever it is.
6250, something like that.
Fifty. They cover June, and then it will be the next two years after that, and then we'll pay them.
And we tried to use it against Jeff, too. We tried to get him to stay an extra month, but that didn't work, so.
So, you know, we are, we're doing that, so it's $75,000 a year. We are budgeting $85,000 a year because of some of these things that are on a time and material basis that may or may not come up. So we made sure that there was sufficient funds there. He did indicate that there will be a person here occasionally, if on an as-needed basis. Come in, they may have to work with Patty on some things, there may be some other things they have to do. So it's not that they won't be there, but it won't be scheduled hours. It will be random, and really isn't, they aren't coming necessarily for the public unless a meeting has been scheduled. Then they might do it here, if it's closer for the person to go to Rogers City because of where they themselves, as a property owner, live, then that could be arranged that way.
Okay.
Yeah, and early on in the committee as well was, you know, I believe the committee was wanting to actually have an actual person in here, and as Jeff said, we went through that whole function. We checked with Bill and checked the charter to ensure that we're not in violation at all of having a firm versus that, so that's all been gone through. So this looks at the current time, the best option for us moving forward. Yeah, well, actually, the best option would be convincing him to stay a couple more years, but, yeah. But anyway, you know, and just on that note, too, it's been a pleasure working with Jeff. I mean, it's nice that during the board reviews, we get to see how hard you work, especially everyone that comes in for the poverty board, just absolutely, you know, knows them by first name, wants to sit down and just chat with them a little bit, so you've done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing that we're asking is if you look at the contract, it's not in our normal format, is that we're asking Bill's office to draft out more of what is our format of the contract, have it prepared then for the mayor, and add it to sign, and then, of course, we'll have Allen sign as soon as he gets back from Mexico or wherever he is vacationing right now.
Okay. Well, that's all very thorough. I guess we should just be grateful that their firm is willing to do this for us.
Question. Is there a stipulation, could there be, that if we feel that they're not performing to the contract, we're not happy with their performance, that we could terminate without paying a penalty? Would that be? I guess it's a question for dog.
Did some language get in of that?
I did read through it, but I didn't know, like, you know, if there's stipulation, we feel that they're not living up to the contract, we're not pleased with the level of service, would there be an opportunity to terminate without paying $15,000?
Yeah, there is one on breach of contract, too. Termination, that's number item 24, termination for breach of contract, somebody's, if they're not performing, we could ask them to correct it, the breach.
If we're simply not happy with them, no, like, if you're looking at the penalty, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It has to be they have to.
There's got to be, they're not fulfilling the contract. You know, if people are simply not happy while you don't have somebody right there, there's a whole lot we can do about that.
Right.
Because we don't have anybody, and we're not likely to get. Based on what Allen said with his experience, people, and probably many of the realtors and others, you know, in the business community, probably just working through email and that is going to be the most efficient way, and they probably already doing it. And so when a lot, you know, when people get used to that, there will be a transition, getting used to that, to that or by phone call, they'll find that they get, you know, 99.9% of everything answered. If they do their meeting, they'll set it up. That may even get to the point that once, if we do get somebody coming in, that we can hire a person, that a lot of that process will still continue that same way. People will, because they get used to it, of just sending an email, making a call, "Did it resolve? Boom, that's the end," is that there may actually be less contact again within the office because they've become used to the other method.
Do you want the city attorney to draft that in the same motion? Can you do that same, or you want a separate motion?
Can we just tell you, ask you to do that?
That's fine. Do you want that part of the motion or no?
I don't, if you wish to include it, that's fine.
I move we approve the contract with Berg Assessing to perform the assessing functions for the city of Alpena, and ask the city attorney to draft the contract accordingly.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Jeff.
That's a regrettable yes, Jeff.
Okay, next up, new business. I called it A-1, just to stick it in there. It's the APD ACC contract. Chief Jeff is on his way, and Don McMaster is here as well.
Come on, Don, we made it.
And that was a quick budget, Bruce.
We have a brief presentation tonight. It shouldn't take much longer than the budget report. If anybody wants to get a change of clothing, jump out the window and quickly understand. I think you all know me, the senior man next to me, I think you all know a lot. President Don, Dr. Don McMaster's of Alpena Community College. And so thank you for getting us on the agenda tonight. This is very important to both of us. Several months ago, we began discussion about having Alpena Police Department provide enhanced coverage to the Alpena campus, and what that would entail, and what that would, well, what would be required to make that happen. And since that time, I have penned a couple of draft agreements and with some input from Greg and some tweaking from Bill. I think we have a presentable agreement tonight that we'd like to bring before you. I understand you got it this afternoon. And what I'd just like to do is run through just real quick here, kind of the. And what I'd just like to do is run through just real quick here, kind of the paragraphs, the bullet points, the highlights of the contract, and if you have any questions for either myself or Mr. or Dr. McMaster, we can go from there. If my audience has any questions, also.
Number one.
But primarily, it's that we would provide a full-time certified police officer to the ACC Alpena campus, and we've been looking at roughly 20 hours, we'd be starting at, per week, Monday through Friday, and primarily during the spring and fall semesters, which is going to be roughly 30 weeks total. And that would be beginning this fall semester of 2018. And then with summer, summer classes, and again, this is all kind of in flux right now, but we would have probably limited coverage during the summer depending on the needs of the college, so that we don't perceive problems there. I've also been attending the board meetings for past five, six months, more or less. Much appreciated. And that would continue, the officer that would be, have the duty at the time, would also be attending the board meetings, and unless the college, you know, had declined that, which I don't think they will. And then the officer would only be patrolling during the time when the colleges are sessioned, not during skid or breaks, or when, you know, the campus is closed due to inclement weather, which happens on occasion. We're looking at initially a five-year agreement, and again, beginning the 2018 fall semester, which would then be concluding at the 2023 spring semester. If agreeable, we would extend that for another five years with a consent of both parties. The great thing about this for us is that this is, through the contribution through the college, is going to allow me to hire a new officer for this. Now, the new officer will not be the ACC officer at this time. It'll be one of our senior officers. Again, that's why the rate is based on a three-year, what we call senior patrimony wage and benefits. But with the current agreement, the college would be looking to pay roughly half of the approximately, just under $80,000 for the wages and benefits for a three-year officer, which comes in. And again, this is a pretty tight estimate, $39,982. And again, that's based on the annual wage of a three-year officer with benefits, including we build in 50 hours overtime into that package. Now, we don't know if we're going to use 50 hours overtime, but we felt that was a good number to kind of start off with. And again, after years two, three, four, and five, obviously, our wages typically go up along with benefits, and so that would be something that, it would be then half of that benefit and wage package. Paragraph F, basically, this deals with the payment schedule. It was pretty straightforward there. And then G, we've asked that we have a suitable office and landline provider for the officer that may be assigned to that duty. APD will retain the administrative and supervision rights of the program, but obviously, we'll be consulting with Dr. McMaster and the college as far as, you know, as we all will be meeting on a regular basis and tweaking it as we need to go along, and discuss any issues that might come up. J is simply just a release clause that may be terminated by either party with 60-day notification or writing, and that we would calculate any balances due at that time. And then K, the last one, is simply a standard, quote, harmless clause. That was Bill's opinion on that one, so. But this is, you know, even though brave and still live over our thunder there, we do, it was characterized as a win-win, and that's exactly how we feel about this. Again, for us, it allows us to build another partnership. We've been very close to the college with these anyway, but again, it just enhances that relationship. I let Dr. McMaster speak to the perceived benefit for the college, but we're very excited about it, just not the extra officer that we'll be able to bring on board, but the services we're going to provide to the college and the community.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I appreciate the cooperation from Chief Jeff. I'm about to start my fourth year at Alpena College, and really, once I stepped into that role, I became much more tuned in to, in some ways, how vulnerable our campus is. And we have five or six buildings, depending on how they're defined, and each has four or five entrances. They're wide open every day from eight, from 6:30 in the morning till 10:00 at night. And we have 1,400 students or 1,500 students on campus, and 120 staff, visitors, community people, and really no security. And we've never had security really to speak of. And, you know, it's a sign of the times and the world we live in, where I don't want to be the one to have to answer what happened if somebody comes in and does some catastrophic mayhem to our people. So really, it's no more complicated than that. For us, our, you know, we have a 14 and a half million dollar budget, so this price tag is about a third of 1%. You know, that's not a budget breaker. I mean, we don't throw money around, but we think this is a fair offer. It helps Chief Jeff in terms of his staffing. During the summer and during Christmas break, we have minimal activity, during Christmas break, we have minimal activity. So I think working together, we can harmonize, you know, the need that you folks might have in the city with the need we have at the college, which is really honed in on two 50-week semesters, one in the fall, one in the spring. That's what we really would like, just someone there. And we see this as contributing to the culture we have at the college, which is open, inclusive, and friendly, and professional. And we have no reason to think that that can't continue, and this police presence will contribute to that. And I'm really, I'm open to your questions you might have, but.
I don't have any questions. I think it's a great cooperation and partnership with the college and benefits, Chief Jeff. So I had a simple question about the contract, as to whether this is drawn up by Bill. I could read it. That's the only reasonable reason why I'm asking.
It wasn't legally.
It's not really legally.
It's not quite ready for prime time yet.
No, it's great, because of the fact that I can read it and understand.
I can fix that.
Bill did read it, and, didn't you?
Yes.
We've sent it to our attorney, Karen Bennett, and she's reviewing it. I think she said it looked fine to her. Our budget cycle runs July 1 through June 30. So our budget will be approved by the trustees at the June board meeting, which is the third Wednesday in June. So this, of course, is, will come in, will take effect on July 1. So we're satisfied, I've read it, I think we're satisfied with it. At the college level, there's a lot of work that we've done in Title IX. So the coordination of the police presence in Title IX will need to be orchestrated, and I think that's all to the good.
Excellent.
I have a question for Chief Jeff.
Yes.
The officer that's assigned to be on campus at certain specific hours, if there's a need elsewhere, or if they're the closest to something in the community, is it flexible where they could respond also? How would that work?
Yes, we've addressed that. Obviously, we're going to, I mean, our commitment to the college as far as if, and, you know, 20 hours is a, kind of a loose number that we're working with right now, but obviously, we're going to honor our commitment. But if an officer had to leave for emergency, that's understood that they would, you know, be able to leave, and then come back. We don't have a set schedule right now. In fact, we're purposely keeping that that way. We're, flexibility is actually the strong point of this program for, I think, both parties. And I made it clear to Dr. McMaster that in the event that something comes up, like, say, evening event, that maybe is unexpected, or whatever else, and they plug an officer there, that they can feel confident that an officer will be provided. And that, but, you know, we're looking at an average of 20 hours per week, that type of thing, based on the needs of both parties. The thing is that we obviously have been put on hold with any type of hiring process right now, because I can't start until this has been approved by both parties. We expect that's going to take, you know, three or four months typically, that's not a quick turnaround. And so in the meantime, this will be, you know, there's going to be a little bit juggling on our manpower, my department, but we will make, you know, the fall semester commitment, one way or the other.
We also have a very vibrant criminal justice program. Larry Thompson teaches it, and does a great job. So we're seeing, Joel and I have talked about this, opportunities there for.
Expanding.
Yes, collaboration, and so, I'm positive about it. I think it's a really good thing.
Excellent. I guess I would, if Bill's okay with it, I would suggest that we move to approve the contract barring any issues that him and Miss Bennett find that needs to be added to. I'm comfortable with them tweaking it if necessary beyond our point, approving the concept. That's okay.
That's fine, yep. I move we approve the agreement for enhanced law coverage between the city of Alpena and Alpena Community College, barring any changes be worked out between the two attorneys.
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
House?
Yes.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Next up, bids, capital improvement plan phase one. Rich Selvander is on his way.
I thought Chief Jeff was going to end it.
On May 1st, 2018, the city received an open bid for 2018 capital improvement plan phase one. Project includes the replacement of water and sewer utilities, the street reconstruction on Fourth Avenue, between Ripley and Bedford, Bedford Street, between Fourth and Fifth, and Fifth Avenue between Ripley and Baldwin. Bid documents were sent to various firms and plan rooms, with two bids received as follows. MacArthur Construction out of Hillman, $583,168.65. And Elmer's Crane and Dozer out of Hillman, $741,258.30. This is below the funding levels that were established in both the water and sewer fund for these projects, so we have adequate funding available. And it's my recommendation to city engineer that the project be awarded to MacArthur Construction for the bid unit prices totaling $583,168.65.
Rich, you said we're below the adequate funding, you know, do you have a percentage on that? Are we coming in about 10, 15%?
I don't have it right off the top of my head.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions for Rich?
Yep. And that was just considered capital phase one, is what the name of the project is?
Yes.
Okay. I move we award the contract to MacArthur Construction in the amount of $583,168.65 for capital improvement phase one.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
House?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Nielsen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Rich, next up, water recycling plant HVAC upgrades.
On May 1st, 2018, the city also received an open bid for the water recycling plant HVAC upgrades. This is the replacement of two rooftop air handlers serving the grit in the primary chambers. There's some, and there's, we'll go in here and we'll talk about Class 1, Division 1, et cetera. It's a terminology used within the electrical portion of it. Class 1, Division 1 is an explosion hazard room, where we have the methane gas, et cetera. So some components were, some components weren't. The bid also included several alternates. One is for a high-low volume control to allow the air to be more efficiently exchanged, allowing for a safer environment for employees working within these areas. Alternates two through five are due in these areas having the potential for explosive gases, and thus classified as Class 1, Division 1. Alternate six connects the centralized control system installed last, as part of the boiler replacement project. We could tie in what they have. The bid documents were sent to various firms and plan rooms, with two bids received as follows. Waste heating and cooling out of West Branch for $79,500, and Wyancoff Plumbing and Heating out of Alpena, Michigan for $83,795. Funding was established in the sewer fund capital outlay for the treatment plant. However, a portion of these funds were utilized for emergency repairs to the septic waste screen washer last fall. Current bid is also over the established budget. Since the bids for the 2018 CIP phase one, which we just approved, came in well under budget, I propose to attach budget amendment to transfer funds from the collection system construction budget to complete the proposed air handler project. After review of the bids and discussion with sewer staff, it is my recommendation that we award Unit 1, Unit 2, Alternates 1 through 3, and Alternate 6. Even though Alternate 4 and 5 are safety implement, they are items attached to the open air units that are situated outside of the explosion area, explosion potential. Local mechanical inspector also indicated these two items were not required for these areas, but could be considered as additional alternatives if funding was available. As Wyancoff fits the definition of local bidder, local bidder's preference criteria was reviewed and did not meet the requirements. It's my recommendation to city engineer that the project be awarded Waste Heating and Cooling Incorporated for the bid price totaling $71,430, and the budget amendment transferring the funds from the capital construction to capital treatment plant be approved to be for the project.
Have we had any experience with this company in the past?
Waste has done a number of projects with us. They're a good company.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I think they were one of the primary contractors down at Public Safety Camp, if I remember.
Any other questions? Me neither.
Okay, and I move that we award the HVAC upgrade project to Waste Heating and Cooling for a base bid of $71,430.
That also includes the budget amendment, though?
It includes the budget amendment.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. I thank you for clarifying.
Walagora?
Hi.
House?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
And Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Rich. Next up is Anapaw with a request to allow food sales in select city parks.
Last but not least, absolutely. Ben Darga is requesting an agreement to allow vendor in select city parks. His business is called Five Bad Hens and serves a variety of foods, including salad, rods, and hot dogs. The operation is moved to trailer and set up on-site with coolers and tables. Mr. Darga is working with the county health department for appropriate inspections. Over the past few years, there have been a number of requests for food vendors to operate within the city parks. These requests include kayak rentals in Duck Park, as well as mobile food vehicles, which have operated in select city parks in 2014 and 2017. Mr. Darga has utilized the previous agreement to select the parks, to which operate in. He agreed to pay the, pay an operating amount of $100 per month to operate in these parks, which is the same amount the city has requested for past vendors. The agreement with the mobile food vendor includes language that allow either party to terminate the agreement with 15 days written notice. Staff believes that limited operation of mobile food operations would be a benefit in many parks. These operations would not only serve people within the parks, but also bring additional people into the park, as well as allow additional food options where previously none had been available. Staff would request the city council approve the attached agreement and allow Mr. Darga to operate within the listed city parks. And Mr. Darga is available for questions if you have any, but.
I am so hungry right now.
And you're talking about food.
Ask if you have samples.
Yes, sorry. If there are no samples, I'm.
We're going to have an issue.
If there are no samples, like, we're gonna have an issue. I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I have none either.
No.
I move we approve the agreement for the city and Five Bad Hands to operate in the proposed parks we have selected.
Second. Haas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water and sewer litigation in order because, I'm just getting on that last part.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
And Haas?
Yes.